Will be made available to the public on our YouTube channel after the meeting's taken place. Your participation indicates your consent to being included in the meeting recording. And the time is now seven fifteen, so we can start the meeting. We'll start with our usual ten minute period of public participation in which any resident can address the council on any matter appearing on the agenda for this meeting. Are there any residents who would like to address the council? Could you make yourself known, please?
Got two hands up, Mr.
I need to scroll and get to the right thing. Ah.
Three hands up.
Yeah, so we'll start off with Matt from Wintingham. Could you just give us your name, Matt, and tell us where you live? You address if that's, if you could, please.
Yes, sure. Hi, guys. Matt Waller, Pallam Road, Wintingham, St Nits. Is that okay? Do you want to carry on?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you.
Yes, I wanted to discuss a raised point about item four about the East West Rail route. As a Wintingham resident, it's of real concern to me that it's been proposed so close to St Nits, especially to the housing elements, because thousands of people living on it. It's going to be closer than the A four two eight. It's currently proposed to run north of the A four two eight, the new A four two eight dual carriageway, which was put in place distance away from the town for a reason. Yet this proposed, three of the proposed routes of five are actually closer than the new A four two eight. And by the time the rail routes completed, you know, no matter how, how busy the A four two eight is, it's going to be electric cars then, a lot less noise anyway. Yet diesel freight trains running through along with their passenger transport. It's a real concern. I'd really like the council to possible to fight this and go towards the either the two other options away from St Nits or push the three options further away to the other side, the south side of the new A four two eight proposed.
Thank you, Matt. That was very helpful. Catherine Goodman. Catherine, could you give us your address quickly if you're prepared to do that as well?
Catherine Goodman is 138 Duck Lane in Ainsbury. Yeah, so when I first moved to St Nits many, many years ago, the only way to get from Northampton to St Nits was to go into London, across and back up again. And here we are, what is now eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years later, nothing's changed. So the rail link, absolutely, we need it in. But along with Robert, along with Matt, I also share concerns. And my biggest one really is why are we not proposing, why are they not proposing to electrify that line from the get go? Every calculation shows it's cheaper to do when you build rather than do it later. And if we don't, you know, where's this building back better that the government promised us?
Okay, I can, having spoken to several people about this today, I think, I think the answer that the government would give and not one that I particularly agree with is that they are expecting the technology in hydrogen powered trains or battery power change to develop, to develop in that time before the railway is built, to the extent that which diesel trains will, or electrified trains will not be necessary and diesel trains will be not be necessary. But at the moment, that seems to me to be pure speculation, but I think that would be the answer. So thank you very much, Catherine. Laura Davenport Ray. Laura, would you, what would you like to say to the council? And could you give us your address, please, as well, if you don't mind doing that?
Yes, so Laura Davenport Ray of Hogson Lees on Love's Farm, St Nits. I'd also like to address number five on the agenda. Specifically, I'd like to speak about electrification of the line, which we've just mentioned. The consultation document provided by the East West Railway Company includes the bold statement that one benefit of the scheme is, quote, achieving biodiversity net gain and aiming to deliver a net zero carbon railway. The document also claims that the project will be, quote, improving quality of life for people locally. The fact that this project proposes to facilitate only diesel trains illustrates just how empty both of those statements are. The combustion of further fossil fuels and emission of further carbon is detrimental to our town, our county, our country and our planet. Electrification at a later date would not only be less cost effective, but is also simply too little, too late. To undertake a new building project on this scale in 2021 without electrification is incredibly short sighted. If this council stands by its declaration of a climate emergency, then a response to the East West Rail consultation must include a condemnation of the lack of electrification of the line. Thank you.
That's a very powerful statement, Laura. Thank you. Catherine, you've still got your hand up. Is that an accidental hand? No, thank you very much.
Yes, it was.
Thank you, Catherine. And I can't see any more hands up. Is there anybody else like to address the council? And if that is, if there's nobody else, then we should start the meeting properly. And we'll start as usual with the roll call, Deputy Town Clerk, if you, if you would, please.
I would, everybody's ready, starting from the top. councillor Andrew Poodle, which I think has just seen in the chat, he's having trouble joining.
I think he's trying to join the meeting, yes.
Lost my list. Barry Banks.
Present.
Barry Chapman.
I can see councillor Chapman here, so I presume that's a yes.
He's on mute. Okay. Caroline Green.
Present.
Caroline Gregson, we have apologies for with valid reasons. And the same for councillor Ben Pitts, apologies with valid reasons. Christine Green.
Yes, present.
Colin Maslin.
Yes, present.
Delphine Johnson. Derek Giles.
Could, could somebody mute their telephone? We can hear somebody talking in the background. That would be helpful. Thank you. Deputy Town Clerk, I'm going to mute everybody and then you can unmute yourself. So, so Karen, please unmute yourself and continue.
Okay, unmuted. So we got two. Derek Giles. Derek Giles, are you there? I can't see my screen because I'm doing the roll call. Can you just?
I can't.
Yes, he's upstairs yelling his head off.
Okay. Diana Collins, we have apologies for with valid reasons. Councillor Doug Terry. Here. Councillor Emma Speed. Present. Councillor Gordon Thorpe.
Present.
Councillor Justin Cooper Marsh.
Present.
Nicola Presland, I did have apologies for if she may not be able to make it.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Okay, thanks, Nicola. Councillor Paul Davis.
Present.
Councillor Robert Simonis.
Present.
Councillor Sandy Giles.
Present.
And councillor Stephen Ferguson.
Present. Thank you very much.
Chair, I think I missed my name in the roll call.
I think we responded for you, councillor Chapman, so I think it'd be much.
Thank you very much. My, my machine was playing up.
And also Andrew Poodle has joined the meeting as well, so I shall mark him down as present. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you. So agenda item number two, members declarations of interest. To receive from councillors declarations as to disclosable pecuniary interests and or non statuary disclosable interests, along with the nature of those interests in relation to any agenda item. Does any councillor want to disclose an interest in any item on the agenda today?
Chairman, I don't want to disclose any what's names, but Karen, can you please send the link through to Derek? Because it's not letting me in again.
Okay, I'll send it by email, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, so there's nobody's declaring the interest. If anything comes up, then please let us know when we discuss that agenda point. Agenda item number three, which is a big one, delegated powers. Members are requested to resolve to grant powers of delegation to the town clerk and deputy town clerk until thirty first of October, twenty twenty one. And maybe our clerk, Philip, could you, could you just explain to us briefly why this is necessary?
You're muted. Certainly, chairman, apologies. The reason for this is because you're now going into a stage where virtual meetings end. The rule of six still applies and which will cover your future meetings shortly. And it's so that the council can continue. Standard practice across all councils at the moment, the clerk is being given delegated powers. What normally happens is everyday items that they can deal with. But if they are any large or contentious items, the same as we do, we have the mayor, the deputy mayor and two other councillors who I consult with so that the decisions are made. They are then ratified by full council, those decisions.
Is that any two other councillors, Philip, or are they specified councillors?
You can name them. In our instance, we have the chairman of finance and the chair of the leisure and community services, who also is the chair of personnel. If it's a finance issue, we then bring in the vice chair. If it's a staffing issue, we bring in the vice chair of that one as well, so that we are, everybody is aware of what's going on.
And, and all those decisions are, how do you record the decisions that are made using the power of, well, the delegated powers? Are they recorded somewhere?
They are recorded and then they are presented to the next full council meeting for sign off by all members.
Okay.
I'll give you an example of a recent use. With the passing of the Duke of Edinburgh, it did mean that council meetings, we were not able to issue summons for meetings. And so there was a gap. Same happens with Her Majesty the Queen. The ten days of national mourning will mean that councils cannot issue summons for meetings for ten days. And so we have that delay in transaction, the council's business during that period of time. But we hope that won't be the case. But the reason for this period till October is so that we get out of the Covid issue and the council can continue to move forward.
What would happen? So what would happen if, if the situation worsens and we cannot meet again? Does, is the October twenty twenty one, we'd be stuck at that stage, wouldn't we? Because those powers would expire, we wouldn't be able to meet to delegate new powers. I'm just, I'm hoping that's not going to be the case, but I'm just.
If the situation worsens by then, the legislation will have gone through Parliament.
Okay, that's, that's good advice. Thank you. Thank you, Philip. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, chairman. My question was very similar to the one that you've just put. Because it may be that the situation worsened or in fact situation improved or changed in, in some way. And I'm a little bit concerned about having a fixed date in there and that we should have something which provided flexibility. Should we be able to meet before that date to call a, to call a meeting? Or, as you said a moment ago, if, if we're to extend that, I, I'm, my concern is the fixed date.
Thank you, councillor Chapman. Councillor Simonis.
Thank you. And so two questions for Philip, if I may, through you, chair. Philip, you mentioned about the full council ratifies any decisions. I assume, given that we're not able to meet, and that's the reason this is in place in first, in the first place, that that's a, that'll be a retrospective ratification once we are then able to meet. The full council doesn't take any part in actual decision making at the time. Thank you. And the other point is just to be really clear about who we talk about when we talk about the clerk in our particular context, given that our clerk has not been available to us for a period of time. So is that yourself on a, on a formal basis or is that another arrangement?
To, to answer your questions, it's, it's a retrospective ratification. And as your agenda does state, it's town clerk stroke deputy town clerk. It then covers you that so that Karen can do that element. And then when Ed returns from his period of sick leave, he will be able to do that in that period till the thirty first of October. It's not me.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, councillor Simonis. Councillor Cooper Marsh.
Thank you, chair. I know you've got the date for the thirty first of October, twenty twenty one. But should all things go well and we can meet the current government dates, we could have a meeting as early as the first or the twenty second of June, couldn't we? And therefore, for Karen to ratify then any decisions that are made up to that point.
So, so I think as we agreed, we agreed a calendar of meetings last night, which had meetings throughout the whole year as normal. And our intention is not to cancel those meetings until it's necessary to cancel those meetings. So, so until those meetings are cancelled, they remain on the calendar. So if we become able to meet again, then, then normal meetings will resume is the way I understand it. So I, so I think until, until, until we, so we will cancel meetings as and when is necessary. But the calendar we voted through last night is, continues to be in force. Does that answer your question, Justin?
Yeah, yes, it does. Yeah, it's just, this thirty first of October is a, is a date that sets so far in the future. It captures most issues should any arise, but we can meet earlier should, should government guidelines.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an important point that we, we should still do that. I don't want to get into the period, as last time, where we stopped town council meetings and then we had to try and fight quite hard to, to resume them. So I don't want to get into that situation. Councillor Thorpe.
Thank you, chairman. Does this also apply to committee meetings? Because committees have delegated powers. Could they still meet by virtual means?
No. Committee, all council meetings as from tomorrow have to be in person or you, you then operate as either a working party or advisory group. And that's your next item on, on the agenda.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I did, I did.
So if a standing committee has less than six members attending, we can attend in person?
If, if you can abide by the government guidelines, the rule of six. So if you've got six on a committee, is it being serviced by a member of staff? And that takes it to seven?
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay.
And, and isn't there also a requirement that meetings are open to the public as well? And so, so it's difficult for us to exclude, isn't it? I, I think that would be quite dodgy ground, wouldn't you think?
Correct.
Chair, a point of clarification, councillor Gregson's just joined, declarations of interest.
Thank you, councillor Cooper Marsh. Councillor Gregson. Do you have any declarations as to disclosable pecuniary interests and or non statuary disclosable interests, along with the nature of those interests in relation to any agenda item tonight?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gregson. Thank you, councillor Cooper Marsh. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to raise the question of planning. Because the district council has indicated that it will continue with face to face meetings in, in an email that is sent out. And I'm presuming this includes DMP. I can't believe that the, that as a quasi judicial body, planning has to, has to continue in, in some form. And so our response as a consultee needs to be covered, covered within this. And I, I'd like through you, chair, to invite the, the clerk to respond on what Huntingdon planning on doing on that.
Certainly, chair, not, not an issue. We cover planning via, we have an officer who looks after planning, makes the necessary comments, sends it to the chair and all members of that committee. They then send it back. Generally, everybody is in consensus with the, those put in by the officer. If it's a large application for a development, then it has been going before the full committee to meet virtually. That's how we've been operating and it's worked very successfully.
Chair, if I may ask, quite, quite often, quite often, individual councillors who are not on the planning committee, myself have a particular problem with this. It's that we, we want to, we want to turn up to represent residents of planning committee meeting. And therefore, there needs to be something, I think, a little bit further than, further than that to enable, to enable council members to represent their residents' views to the, to the planning committee, rather than the planning committee members just being consulted on the planning application.
Sorry, chairman, I didn't make that clear. In Huntingdon, all councillors are on the planning committee, so all councillors get to see it. And comment.
Thank, thank.
Does, does, does the planning officer already have the delegated power to respond to, to planning application? Or is that something we have to delegate as well?
No, you, you, you've delegated, you delegate it to the clerk. The clerk is the proper officer of the council and all members of staff, whatever they send out, is in the name of the town clerk.
Excellent.
After the council.
That's very clear. Thank you. Councillor Cooper Marsh again, or is that the old hand?
It's, it's the new hand. I think we've recently passed this. So could I propose that we, we grant the powers of delegation to town clerk slash deputy town clerk till thirty first of October, twenty twenty one?
You can indeed.
And councillor Thorpe would like to second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Thorpe. Councillor Chapman, would you like to speak on that motion?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm still, I think we may have these in the wrong order because surely we need to, we need to agree on how we will operate. Should we, should we do that rather than agree to do it and then work out how we operate? If we, if we vote to delegate powers to the clerk, deputy clerk till thirty first of October, two thousand and twenty one, we need to, we need to be aware of how those decisions or will be made, how they will be informed. And I believe that is item four on the agenda.
We now have a motion on the table. I'm not sure if I can defer that motion until after the next agenda item or not. I'm not sure that I can, can I? No, I can't. So that's a motion which we need to debate and resolve, I think. Yes, councillor Cooper Marsh. Sorry, councillor Chapman.
So in regards to this motion being on the table, what advice would our local clerk give on this? Is this in the right order or would I need to withdraw the motion in order to debate future meetings?
I think that the delegated powers is not just about future meetings. It is the running of the council to make, get, keep things moving in the interim. You've, you've made your decisions in council, they've all been minuted and recorded. It means the, the delegated powers means the clerk can now, well, the deputy clerk can now get on and action those and not having to come back to you to say whatever. If it is concerned, raise it with the four people I've recommended.
Thank you. One motion stands.
Thank you, councillor Cooper Marsh. Councillor Chapman, is your hand still up or is it a different hand?
Yes, I'm, I'm afraid that I think that we, we do need to do it in the other, in the other order. So unfortunately, I'd have to vote against, against councillor Cooper Marsh's proposal if, if that's going to be taken first because it's, you know, without something saying subject to, I don't know, subject to adoption of a procedure. Then a procedure to inform decisions. Then, then I think it's in the wrong order.
You're free to propose an amendment, councillor Chapman, if you can think of a well worded one. While, while you're thinking, councillor Chapman, councillor Caroline Green has a hand up. So Caroline, could you talk, please?
Yeah, can I just clarify? So what you're saying is with the delegatory powers, we are just giving the clerk or the deputy powers to enact what has already been voted on by the council. They are not making completely new decisions on their own in the name of us as councillors.
Correct.
And, and if, and if, and if decisions have to be made, it's going to be done in consultation with the chair, vice chair and two other councillors, if we adopt the Huntingdon model, which seems like a good one.
Thank you.
I don't see any, any other hands.
Chair, could I suggest we move to the votes, sir?
Yes, that's a good suggestion, councillor Maslin. So all those in favour of the motion as written on your papers are really, actually, members are request a resolve to grant powers delegation to town clerk slash deputy clerk, town clerk until thirty first of October, twenty twenty, October, twenty twenty one. All those in favour say yes.
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 Yes. Anyone against, say no.
No.
Councillor Gregson says no. Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
So that motion is carried, motion is carried. Oh, sorry, thank you. So that motion is carried with, with one vote for no and two abstentions. Thank you very much. Agenda item number four, future meetings. Members to resolve the adoption of working parties to cover the period until, period, period until full in person meetings are recommended by the government, I presume. Councillor Green, Caroline Green.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just going back to the previous thing. So, I mean, it's voted on, but so they can enact what we have already decided on. Shouldn't they be doing that anyway?
So, so it might be the case that that they've already done that. So things we've decided on can be acted on anyway. That's not, I don't think that's not, that's not the point of the motion. The point of the, the resolution is that new business that we have to conduct between now and October potentially, if new things come up, they're going to take advice from, or the deputy town clerk's going to take advice from councillors and then can make a decision based on advice from councillors. So it's for new decisions more than old decisions.
I'm with you. Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Simonis, is your hand gone down on purpose? Did you change your mind?
No, I, I did change my mind, but I'll ask it anyway. With, this, this motion obviously covers the delegation of working parties. Is there, is it possible for the full council to act as a working party in this context? Or is this specific to committees only?
I presume that, Philip, I presume that the full council can be a working party, can't it?
Correct. Absolutely correct.
But if they, so if they're to meet, then there's still the rules of six and outside and all that sort of thing. That must still be complied with.
Chairman, would you like me to go through your options of meetings between now and the twenty first of June?
That would be very helpful.
Can I point of order first, please, chairman?
Yes.
I think that was just joining the meeting.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for spotting that again. Councillor Derek Giles, do you have any disclosure, discloseable pecuniary interests and or non statuary disclosable interests in relation to any agenda item tonight?
Other than the fact that it's taking me all this damn while to log on, no.
I don't think that's an interest we have to disclose. Thank you very much, councillor Giles. Philip, could you please go through the, the items you said you would? Thank you.
Yes, the situation is the court case, which was heard on the twenty first of April. The answer came from the court on the twenty eighth advising that virtual meetings would cease with effect from tomorrow, the sixth of May. They further announced yesterday that members of the public would be allowed to attend any face to face meetings. So if you have a face to face meeting, obviously you need a venue where everybody can be socially distanced. You will need to take risk assessments, you will have to have PPE for everybody and you may consider that flow testing is required. The public will be allowed to attend and again, they must be socially distanced. So it does mean you will need a very, very large room. You are encouraged, if you are having face to face meetings, to have the option to join virtually for members of the public, especially those who just wish to observe and not speak. And members can join virtually, so you will need to set up some system to do that. However, any member joining virtually will not be counted in attendance. There will be recorded on the minutes as present virtual. And when it comes to votes, they will not be able to vote on any debate taking place. The second option, you've given the town clerk, deputy town clerk delegated powers is to go down the working party advisory groups. That means those That means those can meet virtually because they are not committees of the council, they are working parties or advisory groups. They can then make decisions between themselves at that meeting and make the recommendation to the deputy town clerk to transact your decision. Those then working party or advisory group will need to take notes of their meetings, they're not minutes, they are notes, which will then be presented to your town council meeting on the 22nd of June for ratification and adoption. Or you can go down the route of having no meetings at all until the 22nd of June and just allow the deputy town clerk to take what necessary action in consultation with your four councillors as required. My recommendation, chairman and members, would be to go for option two.
That's very clear. Thank you, Philip. Councillor Simonis?
I was just going to say, yeah, thank you Philip for that. That's perfectly clear. On the basis that this buys us options without making any specific commitment to having meetings or otherwise, I'm happy to propose the motion.
Thank you councillor Simonis. Councillor Chapman?
Thank you, chairman. I was putting my hand up to propose the motion, but I'm quite happy to second councillor Simonis's motion. Reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. That's noted councillor Chapman. Councillor Thorpe?
Thank you, chairman. A point of clarification, if you would please, town clerk. Can we now call all standing committees advisory groups?
You can.
Do we need a separate motion to do that?
It would be useful to do that for the audit purpose, just to resolve that issue.
And if we do that, we can meet virtually.
You can, because you're not a committee, you're not part of the council, you are a working party or advisory group.
With your permission, Mr Chairman, then, I would like to propose that all standing committees of this council be re-designated as advisory groups until further notice so that we can meet virtually.
Since we're already debating a motion, can we, we can't, can we debate a new motion, Philip?
No, I would put that that on hold and debate your initial motion and then come back to that.
Are you prepared to 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 do that councillor Thorpe?
I'm prepared to do that. Yes, Mr.
Thank you very much councillor Thorpe. I appreciate that. Deputy Town Clerk?
Oh, yes, thank you. Just a question on committees becoming working parties. Working parties traditionally manage themselves. So do they need to have members of staff present, Philip?
I would advise for continuity and clarification of understanding that a staff member should be present at an advisory group so that there is no misunderstanding of what members want to do so that then you can use your delegated powers accordingly.
I think that's that's a sensible suggestion as well. I think we want to mimic the existing structure as closely as possible using the new structure. So I think that's a good suggestion there. If possible, we should have staff members present. Don't see any other hands. In which case I'm going to go back to, oh no, councillor Maslin?
Thank you, Chair. Could could we ask Philip to just summarise what he's recommending and what we're voting on, please?
Yes, certainly. That I'll just refer back to your agenda so we actually don't cross-reference what's on your agenda. Future meetings, members to resolve the adoption of working parties to cover the period until until full in-person meetings are recommended, recommenced. I would actually call them, just to avoid confusion, I would call them advisory groups. So members to resolve the adoption of advisory groups to cover the period until in full, until in-person meetings are recommenced.
Thank you, Philip.
Mr Chairman, I believe that is exactly what I proposed, is it not?
It's very similar to that councillor Thorpe, yes. Thank you. Councillor Chapman, you, your hand is up, is this for your?
Yes, Chair, because you were going to move to the phone to know if I've my right to speak.
I had remembered you councillor Chapman, but thank you anyway. Oh, councillor Green is
Okay, thank you. I thought I'd been forgotten, but
councillor Green's got a hand up councillor Chapman. Would you, would you mind just deferring for a second?
I have to get, I have to procedurally give way to her then.
Yes.
One question, would agendas be sent out as they are now for this or how does that work? Regarding agendas for the advisory groups?
You would not receive a summons to attend a meeting. You would receive an invitation to attend an advisory group.
That's very clear. Thank you. Councillor Simonis, before we go to councillor Chapman?
Just to clarify based on what Philip's just said, I would like to amend my own motion, if indeed I can do that, to replace the wording of working parties with advisory groups.
Councillor Chapman, are you happy to accept that amendment?
Yes, yes, I, that was what I was going to say my in my reserved right to speak. So I'm quite happy to do that and then forget, forego my right to speak.
Thank you. We'll both, so it's time to move to vote. For all those in favour of the motion, say yes.
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 Yes. Yep.
Yes.
All those against, say no. Any abstentions? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Agenda item number five is an important one. So as you are aware, that the East West Rail consultation has been open since 31st of March and is open till the 9th of June. We have been invited to formulate a response to that consultation, that consultation as a town council. And because we will not have the opportunity to move to meet again before then, I think it's important that we try and do that tonight or come to some other solution in which we do it. I hope that councillors have had a good chance to read through the consultation. I spent some time this afternoon with Mr Hugh, who addressed the meeting at the start, who is a Wintringham resident, and we visited the the part of the route which is, which, which as a St Neets East councillor goes very close to the edges of the new Wintringham estate. So the 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 roundabout off the current A428 onto Cambridge Street is is where the railway is going to pass. I listened to the concerns of St Neets East residents and I came home and did some more research to try and understand how the A, the the East West Railway would cross the current A428. Of course, the A428 is being moved, but the current A428 will be an access point to Loves Farm and Wintringham still. And I was surprised to see that it's going to be by means of a 36-foot-high viaduct. It's going to be 36 feet high or 11 metres high at at its tallest point, but will will stretch for a distance of approximately half a mile. Now, when you look at the lines on a map, you know, a railway line next to a road doesn't seem too imposing, but a 36-foot-high railway viaduct to me is a matter of extreme concern. I think not only to the residents of the Wintringham estate, many of whom have recently purchased houses in good faith before the route was moved by the East West Rail consultation. So the original consultation document had a different preferred route and these these routes are completely new. So people who recently purchased houses on Wintringham have been completely surprised by this. I think it will have a negative impact for the whole of the Wintringham estate and also for the Loves Farm estate and for the whole of St Neets East because the 36-foot-high railway viaduct is going to cause visual pollution and noise. I also hear the concerns of, I think, all of our public contributors earlier in this meeting, all of whom voiced concerns about the fact we are going to be building a diesel railway, which probably won't be finished until 2030. And and I agree with Miss Davenport Ray's suggestion that as a council who has resolved to try and solve this climate emergency, declare a climate emergency problem, I think it would be very backward thinking of us to support a diesel railway. We're supposed to be trying to get to net carbon zero by 2030 and having diesel trains running through St Neets, catching a diesel train to Cambridge seems to be a very negative step. My own personal opinion is also is by the time the railway is built, the A428 dueling will be finished and it will be equally, much easier, as easy to catch a bus to us from to to Cambridge. The proposed St Neets South station is not in St Neets. It's, the station will be located somewhere between Little Barford and Thamesford. So I'm not particularly in favour of the preferred routes, which go too close to Wintringham. Also not in favour of the other routes, which would also cause lots of damage to the community at Abbotsley. While not St Neets, it's a near neighbour of ours, that's a very special village and we need to be careful not to destroy that. So at the moment, I'm not particularly in favour of the whole thing. Councillor Maslin, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm much of a, in agreement with you. I, listening to to Mayor Palmer yesterday on TV, he was making great recommendations for the Cambridge to Camborne train service and sort of forgot about St Neets and Bedford. He seemed to focus, as he always does, on the Cambridge end of it. I have very little faith that this will happen. I I think it's just politicians pie in the sky. What can we promise this week and get some money for? And then we can nick it back again like we did before. Sorry, I didn't say that. I withdraw that comment. But I I don't think this is going to happen. And I'm definitely not in favour of the suggested route.
I think having, thank you councillor Maslin, having seen, I'm involved, there's there's a protest group in Bedford. I think to focus councillors' attentions in the Bedford community, where town councillors voted for an alignment, are being held responsible by residents for for the destruction that the railway line is going to take. So I think we need to be very careful, whatever decision we make and whatever decision we recommend tonight. I think we need to be careful that that residents will be watching and holding us accountable. Councillor Simonis?
Thank you. So I haven't got a tremendous amount to add to what's already been said. I think the three residents at the beginning, Catherine, Matt and Laura, I think effectively said all the all the main points on this. As a St Neets East councillor, I'm also concerned about the proximity to Wintringham. I'm also concerned that the alternative routes go through great swathes of countryside. So I can see the advantage of following the A428 corridor and limiting that impact. But but the impact on Wintringham as proposed is is not acceptable in my view. I think the point that Matt made around taking the railway south of the A428 might have some merit if that was something that we could suggest was looked into. I think, and the other point was simply around the electric trains. I can understand why diesel is being proposed as the the default if you can't do electric. And then there's this sort of vague statement around future technologies and non-committal things like that. I think what I would want to see is we will not run diesel trains. We will find an alternative that's environmentally friendly out of the time we're ready to do that, be that electric, hydrogen or something else. But I think we want to see that commitment. Again, Laura makes a very good point about this council's commitment to net neutrality. So, yeah, as I say, I've said a lot that's already been said.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and perhaps we should try and word it into a motion presently. Councillor Gregson?
Yes, also as a St Neets East councillor, I'd like to to reflect on what councillor Ferguson and councillor Simonis have said about it going so close to Wintringham. I feel that we're still slightly lacking of information. I've spent quite a lot of time this afternoon going through the appendices and detailed papers to do with this, finding out, you know, it's very difficult to see that about the viaduct and things like that. It's sort of away in an appendix somewhere. And I don't think it's something that people sort of know about yet. And like, are there a lot of other things? Obviously, we've been concentrating on Wintringham. Are there other aspects of this for St Neets that we haven't noticed yet? Because we haven't been through every detail of what's in that, those consultation papers. I was very interested to see, to read about the the interchange with the East Coast Main Line. So there's quite a lot talked about, about those interchanges and the different angles that they're at in the different for the four different proposals. But I think it's it's just, you know, pulling together all of that and making sure we cover everything in our response. I think that's my my concern at the moment.
Yeah, you can, I think everybody's received a copy of the consultation document, but I don't think you'll find any notification in that consultation document about a 36-foot-high viaduct. You'll just see a plan elevation which shows lines going roughly alongside the A428, which doesn't look so so offensive. Train track next to a road, you think you've already got the road, but not understanding that it's going to be, you know, 36 feet is is really tall. You're going to be able to see it from miles and miles around. And the noise pollution level is going to be increased as well because there'd be nothing to 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 obstruct the noise transmission. So thank you councillor Gregson. Councillor Thorpe?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry councillor, yes, sorry.
That we don't have a a map which shows the new A428 as well as the proposed train line, which I believe is going along the north side of the proposed A428. But that would be really useful for us just to be able to orientate ourselves so we can actually go out, walk in the fields and see the line of the new A428. But at the moment, we don't have enough detail to see the line of the the proposed train line. And I just think it's it's key that we we really look at this stuff in detail. Thank you.
I I agree. I think that the consultation document and the online material is is thoroughly inadequate. Councillor Thorpe, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Not at all. Yeah, I I questioned the use of diesel trains over a year ago when we had a presentation in the Priory Centre. But of course, this is the new route. The answer I was given then was that they can't electrify the line because the tunnels and bridges between here and Bedford are too small. So at present, that's why the default is for diesel. But hopefully, and and we don't know, 2030 is not that far away. But hopefully, they will find a solution. And this is why they're being very coy about it, that it will be some form of possible hybrid with, you know, a cutinery which then folds down and and reverses to battery for this stretch. And then the cutinery goes back up again when they reach the East Coast Main Line. As regards to route, these St Neets, the proposed St Neets new station is quite rightly, as everybody has said, is it Thamesford? Or in the area of Thames, but not St Neets. So I, my preference would be that the proposed new line now goes as far south from St Neets as possible, passing through the station at Thamesford and then sweeping up towards the East Coast Main Line, but staying south of St Neets. Thank you.
That's that's a good observation, Gordon, because I think, I think that the natural preference is to have the station as close as possible to St Neets. So the nearest location it would be would be south of Little Barford Power Station and the furthest location would be Thamesford. But in terms of disruption, having a having a further station, because to be honest, for a commuting point of view, it's pretty difficult to get to Little Barford by foot or even by cycling unless we substantially increase the cycling infrastructure. So it's a good point that being further away might might be an advantage. As for the point about not being able to electrify parts of the line, that's clearly a problem of investment. And it sounds to me like it's trying to be done on the cheap. There are solutions, technical solutions, always technical solutions if you're prepared to pay for them. I've been working in in the automotive and energy industry for 30 years. And from my first, almost 30 years, and from my first days as an engineer, hydrogen-powered cars and trains were always just around the corner. Somebody says today that they've always been 10 years away and I I'm not confident that we'll have hydrogen powers or even battery-powered trains before the 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 planned completion date for this railway is mid 2020s. Yeah, it will probably be 2030, but that's not a very long while away. And counting on future technology to 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 solve this problem. I can imagine there's there's a severe risk that we'll end up with diesel trains on this line. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree with a lot of what councillor Thorpe has said. I gave it quite a lot of study this afternoon. And like councillor Gregson, I found the material either lacking or in detail or very dense. Initially, some months ago, I thought it should come as close to St Neets as possible. And I have totally changed my mind. If one is going east-west, one has to go south to a connecting station. On your, so you park your car possibly in St Neets Railway Station or a multi-story where one to be built. And you would jump on a train, one stop south. And you would jump on a train, one stop south. Now, it doesn't really matter whether that one stop south is one mile or eight miles. You'd have to catch a connector and get off at that station. And therefore, I've come to the conclusion that far south from St Neets would be less damaging. And also somewhere, nearly finished, somewhere in all the literature, it made use of using, it made reference to using an old railway track bed which still exists, which would be a cheaper alternative. Now, that's a fair way south of St Neets. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, Thamesford or even further south at Sandy would be preferable. And it would afford the protection to the new housing states that we've got around St Neets. It would afford them some protection. Thank you Chair.
I think that's a really good observation and the observation that none of the stations, even though one of the stations is called St Neets South, none of the stations is actually in St Neets. That's a very good observation. Thank you councillor Davis. councillor Chapman.
Thank you Chairman. I find this thing about the viaduct is very well hidden. I've been trying to, I've been trying to find the information on the EWR site. I've been to numerous presentations. I've never heard anything about a viaduct. The size of the viaduct, which was described earlier on, it seems a nonsense to me really when, you know, a much smaller viaduct has been pushed to be knocked down in Huntingdon for years. And a viaduct of that scale would mean that the problems that there are in Bedford, which councillor Thorpe rightly points out and being raised at EWR meetings, which restrict the introduction of electric trains, addressing those structural problems would be far easier than building a viaduct of the size that was described earlier on. So I'm really, I'm really very, very confused about how that would happen. In terms of, in terms of if this scheme was produced, then, sorry, if this, if a development order was raised for this scheme, then it would, seems as though it would mean that much of the housing on, certainly on Loves Farm Phase Two and Wintingham would be able to serve blight notices on EWR. So it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem to stack up with. I've already responded to this personally, to this consultation. But I didn't have that, any information about a viaduct when I did so. And I don't, I don't think we've, you know, we've got detailed enough information to say anything. When we look at the, I mean, the combined authority mayor has repeatedly talked about the metro coming into St Neets. I mean, exactly the same problem which has been raised before when it's been discussed. Has, you know, hasn't been, hasn't been addressed. There's been talk about it like a guided bus going down the, going down the roads and all sorts of other things. And I'm not expecting the metro to come to St Neets. And I'm not actually, in reality, I'm not expecting this railway line to come as close to Wintingham as we've, we've been discussing. There is one other, one other point, and that is that the when the A428 Highways England first, first launched their A428 upgrade project, the senior officers of Highways England said that by moving the, moving the A428 further to the, further to the east, that what that, that would be justified financially because it would release more housing land. Now, releasing more housing land would, it seems, put houses exactly where this, this route appears to be. I mean, there isn't joined up thinking between the EWR and, and the Highways England over this. The two schemes seem completely contradictory. But I don't think we've got enough information. I can't see that this route would be feasible. If, and especially not if there was a massive viaduct because, because it would, it would mean that just about all of all of the eastern sections of Wintingham would be able to serve blight notices on EWR. You know, which would be a nonsense. So, so I I don't know, I'm looking, I'm looking at the EWR consultation. I can't find the information on on this. So.
I can provide the document that I was supplied with today after the meeting if councillors are interested to see it and they can, they can verify that for themselves. So yes, that shows the length of the viaduct. And councillor, you're exactly right. You're completely right on the lack of communication between the 428 project team and EWR project team. Because in the initial stages of the East West Rail consultation, the rate of the A428 wasn't decided and these routes weren't included. Since the route of the A428 has been decided, all of the routes now follow, or most of the routes, three of the five routes follow the A428. And so clearly, you know, the initial consultation progress, process has been rendered ridiculous. There was, these routes were never talked about before. So all that work has basically been for nothing. councillor Poodle.
On mute. Yeah. Just to go back, obviously electrification would be better. In terms of how far away hydrogen is, it might not be as far away as expected, although I'm sceptical that it would be deployed in this. When you look at Hydroflex retrofitting to the 319 series and Arcona in Scotland retrofitting to the 314, that's for deployment this year. It is happening. I don't think it's necessarily 10 years away, but I doubt very much that we'd see it happening on this line. But in general, I think regardless of the propulsion method, I think the visual impact, if we do have that sort of embankment, that is a much bigger issue in my mind than necessarily concerning about the motor force right now. Because we can in the future change how we're driving the trains, but I think the viaduct's a big issue.
Thank you. Andrew, councillor Simonis again.
Thank you. Just to say that it's clear there's a lot of uncertainty. And, you know, just unknown points. And I think when we do formulate our response, that should include an invitation or indeed potentially an insistence that actually that we get a presentation as council with members of the public able to ask their own questions as well through us, et cetera, et cetera. So we get some of these queries addressed properly.
We can try, but the consultation period is only to the 9th of June, so leaves us just over a month. Yeah, we can try, but it's going to be difficult, I think. councillor Thorpe.
Thank you Chairman. I have to ask myself, is what benefit will this rail link bring to St Neets? And in all honesty, I'm struggling to find a positive.
I think it will provide better connections to the west. So if you were to try and get to Bedford or to Milton Keynes without, or Oxford even, using, without using a motor vehicle, then it would certainly improve those connections. I agree with you. The connections to the east for most residents, especially once the A428 dualling is done, it's marginal. I see very few benefits. And I think that not many people want to get a train south of St Neets to get on a diesel train to go into Cambridge. That doesn't seem to be a very environmentally friendly or even a very convenient option. councillor Derek Giles.
Thank you Chairman. Yeah, it's been interesting to listen so far. I'm extremely concerned about this viaduct, which is very, very late news. Which, you know, I think we need some real clarification on that because it hasn't, as Barry said, it hasn't been advertised or anything like that. So this is a complete out of the blue. I think we've also got to realise what the main traffic on this route will be. It will not be passages, it will be goods. From Felixstowe, Harwich to the Midlands. And they rumble through the night, they really do. So we need to take that into consideration. Our ancient power station, I don't think will be here in the next probably 10 years because it's due for recommissioning anyway. I think it's been sold abroad somewhere, but that's by the by. So that needs to be taken into consideration. And quite honestly, the original plan, which everybody seemed to agree with, was the A428, a joint project with the A428 and a light railway got enthusiasm from all sorts of places. And I think that's what we should be pushing for. I know it doesn't come under the East West Railway, but I think it's an opportunity with the A428, you know, extension if you like, a light railway, Dockland Light Railway. But I'm really worried about this viaduct because, as I say, trains rumbling through the night. Did you say it was three metres? How many metres?
11 metres or 30. I would have thought you were a 36 foot man to be honest, Derek, but 11 metres or 36 foot in old body, yes.
Well, I mean, I couldn't believe it. That's towering in the air, that is. That really is. A noise at ground level, okay, would be, you know, practically unacceptable. But that, you know, it's just out of this world. In fact, you know, we're looking at low-flying aircraft coming in from, to Luton. Will they? No, 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 I don't verify. But I think what part of the recommendation is that we do need more time and more explanation to the effect of the viaduct, of this proposed viaduct. I shan't be voting for or anything like this unless that's included. And also recommend that the EWR combine the resources with the A428. You know, because as people have said, this is, everybody's providing it in different directions. No joined up thinking. You've seen it before, of course, in government departments, but as I say, it worries me, this, this this viaduct. And I'm not very happy with it at all.
councillor Chapman.
Thank you Chairman. I would, I would like to propose that we write to EWR requesting that they urgently attend an advisory meeting or we can call it whatever we like. And then the council come to a, come to a conclusion for the clerk to then, then write to them on our behalf. So if we just, if we just resolve that the clerk responds to this following, following deliberations at a meeting with EWR, that meeting could be virtual and could be within the rules. I don't think that we need to make a decision tonight because we can't make a decision tonight.
I would second that, Barry. I think, I think, I think it's a good decision for us to form an advisory group or a working party, whatever you want to call it, so to give us the option to discuss it further. And yeah, I'd be happy to serve on that working group as well and, and help the clerk formulate a response.
Chair, I believe it should be just another meeting of all councillors, but with the EWR attending.
Okay, that's, that's a good suggestion. I would like to submit some response to the consultation before 9th of June though. So if we leave it in the hands of deputy clerk to try and arrange a meeting with EWR, if we cannot arrange a meeting for EWR, then we still have another meeting before 9th of June. So we can make our response because I'm actually hearing lots of consistency and agreement in the replies of councillors. I think the concerns are fairly universal. And so it would be important that we get those concerns across, especially the concerns about the diesel trains, especially the concerns about the viaduct. And actually, there's some rather excellent suggestions about the station location from councillor Davis and I think perhaps councillor Thorpe about making the station, the station location being rather irrelevant to St Neets. Are we going to catch a train to it anyway? councillor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I would suggest that we formulate a holding response, basically saying that we need more information. A. B. We are deeply concerned about the effects of an 11 metre viaduct. And C. We would wish to see some form of, I don't know what to call it, motivation other than diesel. Bearing in mind that we have promised our residents that we will be carbon neutral by 2030.
I agree with all of that, Gordon. That's excellent. Thank you. councillor Chapman, again, is that still an old hand?
Yes, I mean councillor Thorpe has just said it. If that was noted down, then I'd like to second him as a proposal, if that was a proposal from him.
If it was a proposal, yes.
The proposal was, was, was what, Gordon, without?
That we send a holding response but expressing our concerns, our threefold concerns. A. Regarding the erection of an 11 metre viaduct.
Yes.
B. The we would wish to see some form of motivation other than diesel, being as we have promised our residents that we will go carbon neutral by 2030. And I think those were the three. A holding letter. Oh, and to say that we have insufficient information at this present time on which to base any conclusion.
Thank you. That's a good proposal. Thank you. And I hope deputy town clerk noted that down. councillor Sandy Giles.
Thank you Chairman. Totally. I mean, I've listened to all the arguments here. And as I say, I'm old enough to have been travelling on the original Cambridge to Oxford railway line through Gamling Gay and Potten and all those other places. What does concern me, and it's been mentioned by lots of people this evening, there doesn't seem to be any joined up thinking. And it rather reminds me of when we've had work done outside, you know, the workmen come along and dig the paths up and lay something down and then put the path to right. And then five minutes later, another utility comes along and pulls it all up again and redoes it. And that's, that's what I can just imagine was going to be happening with the railway and the 428. So totally in agreement with the proposal that Gordon Thorpe has, has just proposed. And we're not in a position to, to make an informed decision tonight because we're not informed. We haven't been told everything. And it rather seems as though perhaps they didn't want us to know everything before we made a decision. I mean, this business about this huge viaduct is so concerning. It would be a massive structure. Why didn't we know about it before? Why was it hidden away? Very, very concerning, very worrying. And we've got to put our residents first and would propose we go to the vote because I think the motion as proposed by councillor Thorpe and seconded was really good. Thank you.
That's an excellent suggestion, but I noticed that Philip has his hand up and it's always good to hear from our clerk.
Thank you Chairman. I'm just noting that you've had two proposals put forward. councillor Chapman, seconded by councillor Giles, that you wanted a meeting and more information. And then you took councillor Thorpe's proposition. I'm not certain if you're going to vote on both or if councillor Chapman's going to withdraw his and it all is merged into councillor Thorpe's.
I think we could easily just vote on both, couldn't we? They're not at all contradictory.
Chair, if you will bear with me for a second, I am addressing that point in chat at the moment, but I'm not.
What are we going to do with real life?
In terms of an amendment.
Well, we can't address things in chat. We're going to have to talk to each other.
Basically, I believe that we need to extend the motion to say, and the council requests and demands that EWR urgently attends a virtual meeting with the council specifically to explain its intentions with regard to. Um specifically to explain its intentions um with regard to the routes of Saint um adjacent to Saint Neets.
I I will accept that amendment if councillor Chapman withdraws his initial um proposal.
Sorry, that um of course councillor Thorpe, because um basically that is my initial, my initial one, so I'm combining the two.
Who was your second councillor Thorpe? Sorry, I didn't note that.
I was.
Councillor Chapman was my second.
I I presume you accept your own amendment, then councillor Chapman, so that's, that's easy.
Well, I I I I accept councillor Chapman's amendment. And he is the seconder.
Are you typing that, that councillor Chapman?
Yes, I am.
Two fingers. I I want to thank you all for an excellent debate. Actually, thank you for the effort you've put into considering that. It was a really, really interesting debate and it's nice to have um such a uh agreement, I think.
It was councillor Chapman's doing that. I, you know, I originally, I wanted the uh railway line to come as close to Saint Neets as possible. But this, you know, now is is beyond the pale. There was no mention of this viaduct before whatsoever.
This is part of the problem is the whole consultation, the original consultation that you attended has has been completely uh.
Completely trashed.
Trashed and replaced by this one. Uh.
Yeah.
Christine, did you have your hand up briefly? Do you want to speak while while Barry types?
I'll just put it in the chat. I was just gonna say that I feel quite sad tonight because um these meetings have worked so well. And I shall really miss them. And um just want to thank everyone for making it work so well, all these many months that we've been doing it. And to thank you, Chair, and all the other chairs at committees. It's been great.
It's going to be interesting going back to to real life meetings, especially.
Someone show me how to tie a tie again, Chair.
I've added, I've added some words in, words in the chat um to be um appended to councillor Thorpe's motion. Um I think it pretty much covers it, um that we we continue the motion to say. And the council requests and demands that EWR urgently attends a virtual meeting with the council in sufficient time to enable the council to be informed. And make an appropriate response.
Councillor Christine Green says we can't demand things. Can we not demand things?
Of course we can demand them.
Are you, Philip, are you happy with with Saint Neets Town Council demanding things? We're a very demanding council.
Perhaps we could use the words request and require rather than demand.
I think that's more appropriate.
All right.
I just feel very annoyed about this.
Well, we all do, Barry.
So the proposal, the proposal is. Do you want to read?
Then the council requests and requires.
Shall we, shall we read out the complete proposal, including Gordon's section as well then? So the proposal is that the deputy tenclark sends a holding response expressing our concerns about A, the erection of eleven meter viaduct. B, we want to see some form of motivation other than diesel. Um and C, we have infant sufficient information.
I think it should say propulsion rather than motivation.
I agree. Propulsion other than.
Yeah, I I I just couldn't think of the right words. Thank you, councillor Davis.
And C, we have insufficient information at this time to make this decision. Uh with councillor Chapman's amendment that the council also requests and demarcate, no, that was it.
Request and requires.
Request and requires that EWR urgently attends a virtual meeting with the council in sufficient time to enable the council to be informed and make an appropriate response. With that, we'll move to the vote. All those in favour say yes.
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 Anyone against? Any abstentions? Um and that's the end of the meeting, I think.